Welcome. Thank you all for coming tonight. Welcome to our Beryl County School System Work Session as we prepare for our October School Board Meeting. Next week, the indication of the pledge will be by Mr. Kane. Underboro High School Junior ROTC will present the colors. We'll approve the minutes from August and September meetings. We'll approve the agenda. We'll review some committee reports. Superintendent will have some recognition. We may or may not have visitors, and at this time I don't think we have any guests. Not this morning. That being said, Dr. Green, anything for us tonight?
Well, I'm going to turn over my time to Ms. Brown tree, she has a couple of presentations.
Awesome.
Good evening. Great to see you all tonight. So as you know, we have been struggling pretty much since the pandemic with having an substitute teacher facility. So we've been brainstorming different ideas of how can we reach new people who have recruited folks to be substitute teachers for us? And so one of the ideas that we've come up with that we're going to test is a TV commercial. And I'd like to walk you through something about them. So we shall come over to the next slide, please. We are going to be running commercials in the wider media markets through Comcast. And so it covers almost 100% of Beryl County, the state of the may not be a part of the territory. But as you can see from the map, it goes well beyond that into some additional areas as well. So we'll be reaching a lot of folks in other communities. So we will be running commercials from October 1st until the end of November. And then we'll run commercials to run from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM every day. So you can see it's a much more reasonable cost than what I thought it was going to be, $3,000 for the campaign for both months. And now who used to say that ESS, our partner with bringing in substitutes, has covered half of the cost of that for us? So only 1,500 of them to be in our market.
How many spots is that?
Oh, I'm going to tell you that in your question, thank you. So our target audience, we're going to do it 60% female, 40% male, because we do tend to have more females. So add a substitute in our classrooms. Our estimated impressions is 122,000. And so an impression is the number of people that a commercial has been sharing this year. And so to answer your question though, that's going to be 472 commercials that are going to run over this two months. And they're going to run across seven networks. These are networks that you know. And so HGTV, USA, ID, Walmart, ESPN, TLC, and then Columbia. And so commercials will be running against two different target audiences. We're going to be focusing on 18 to 50. And we're going to be talking about key messaging there, looking at flexible hours, additional income, following along with school schedule. And then we're also going to focus on the 51 to 65, really looking at those folks that are retired, looking for some additional income without having to give up their retirement lifestyle that they get to contribute when they want to. But still make an impact positively in our community. And so when a commercial's run, if it is targeting someone that's maybe retired, it's going to run on a different show on that network versus someone that's going to be younger. And so the media placements will align with our target audiences. We shall come over to the next slide, please. And so when you think about TV, you think about, okay, literally on my television, it's coming through cable. But really Comcast offers a lot more than that. And so anyone that is in the wider markets, they can be watching it through their television. However, they can also watch it if they're streaming. So live TV, streaming TV on the different websites, Roku. There's a ton, there's eight or nine different ways that people will be able to see the commercial as a part of their viewing experience, pretty much anywhere that they're viewing it through Comcast. So it's not just on your TV, it's all the different ways that people are going to be consuming those shows will be exposed to our commercials as well. And so as I mentioned, we're going to have two different commercials that'll have different targeted messaging. And so since they're only 30 seconds long, I thought we could go ahead and show them to you tonight. We'll start going live on October 1st, so on Saturday, you may see them. We'll be supporting this with additional social media campaign to get our community excited. Because the exciting thing is, there are no other school systems that are using TV commercials within our area right now. And so that will be something that our families and students are going to say, wait, that's my school, that's my teacher, that's me on TV, which is really exciting. So we'll be sharing those commercials as well, and I'm sure we'll get some additional advice. But ultimately, the goal is for us to increase the number of substitutes. And so that's ultimately going to be the metric as we're testing the TV commercials. If this is successful, and we do see an increase in the number of people applying to be substitute teacher for us, we're going to be looking to do a second campaign in the spring, hiring bus drivers, because we know that's also a need. And so by focusing in mid-spring, that will give us enough time to then go through the training so that they're prepped for the next year as well. So we shall do what, play commercial number two for us?
The Beryl County School System apart, it's our teachers that make the difference. With 19 schools and almost 15,000 students, our teachers need your help. We are now hiring dedicated substitute teachers with competitive pay and flexible schedules. Substitute teaching is an excellent opportunity to support our schools. Gain valuable classroom experience if you're thinking about a career in education or use it to supplement your income. Apply today to become a Beryl Bold substitute teacher.
You guys noticed there was a QR code there, so if people are watching and they want to hit pause and scan it right there, we'll be tracking this folks that come through as well. We shall play the other one for us. Do you saw that first one focused on folks that are?
Career education is what sets the Beryl County School System apart, and it's our teachers that make the difference. With 19 schools and over 14,000 students, our teachers need your help. If you're retired and looking for something meaningful to fill your day while not jumping back into the daily grind, we are hiring dedicated substitute teachers. With competitive pay and flexible schedules, it's an excellent opportunity to help educate our next generation. Apply today to become a Beryl Bold substitute teacher.
Thank you, Michelle. So I just have to give a shout out to Michael Jones. We all know he's a major in the job, and he did such a fantastic job with the script. And he went and picked out all the footage and put together all the oncoming graphics. He did some amazing job for this. And I know he does so much work for United States, and I totally can shout out to him for the work that he did on these commercials. So Matt, do you have any answering questions?
Why did you stop at 65? Have you not heard that 60 is the next one?
I don't want to say ages.
I think it's a great idea. The key is to track how many hits we get, make sure that the agency knows we. You know, you can also look in the radio too, if this works. Radio is cheaper and.
Yep, we're dipping our toe in system advertising, so it's not good. Thank you.
I'll let you know the communications report is also there for your review. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'll let you review that in your leisure.
Thank you. Ms. Houston.
Okay, crazy. Fantastic. All right, we're going to go over the invoices between 10 and 24,999 for September. Oconee River District from the General Fund, $18,575. And that's for 743 teachers participating in the Oconee Rivers Georgia Youth Science and Technology Center. And that's district-wide. Advanced Education out of the General Fund, $20,400. This is for accreditation for fiscal year 2023. HPI International paid out of capital projects funds for $14,846 for 16 faculty teacher laptops, and of course that's for BASSA. Dell Computers out of the General Fund, $13,700, and that's for 20 Dell laptops for IT stock. And that's district-wide if anybody needed one in mind. 806 Technologies out of Title I, $10,400, and this is the software program to house documents for monitoring in Title I. And that's district-wide. Dell Computers, Capital Projects, $12,920, 34 seat fit Chromebooks, and that's for seat fit. Zone LLC is paid out of the General Fund for $11,750, and that's District W licenses, 2,500 of those, and that's district-wide. And the last one, Fall of School Solutions, General Fund, $13,013 for the Destiny Cloud Service Renewal, and that's district-wide. Any questions on those invoices? Okay, um, so this morning, I told you that I would bring to you an age-based tax exemption study. I thought about doing this myself, but with all the unknowns, such as the age of our taxpayer and future economic trends with past values. I saw that from Carl Vincent Hessepa, and he's wanting to work with us and the Tax Commissioner and Assessor. And I'm going to give us a report hopefully by January. So they will look at the fiscal impact of removing or increasing the income limitation and also increasing the amount of the exemption. So we look forward to working with them to get you information you need to make any decisions coming up on the age-based tax exemption.
Jennifer, I have a question about this. Now, we're looking at increasing the income limit, right? And it was news to several of us that there was actually, if property was valued at more than $200,000.
Yes.
Then those exemptions wouldn't apply.
I didn't really put it together either. It's an $8,000 exemption, and that equals a $200,000 home. So when they started saying 200,000, I was like, how did they come up with that? Yeah, so it's another way to look at it.
So my concern is that even if we didn't eliminate all the exemptions, okay. I'm still concerned about this $200,000 piece, because you can't buy a starter house in Beryl County right now for under $350,000.
Sure, so they're going to look at increasing that value.
Okay, yeah. Okay, are they going to come back to us with how much it was, how much that value would have to be in order to?
They're just going to give us a few values, 200,000, 300,000, 400,000, and then no, no value at all.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're doing.
We're covering, so trying to cover everything, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm excited about it too, because me just trying to pull numbers out of the air, it's not, it's not going to be useful for you guys. So thank you.
It's good to have someone that, you know, impartial.
Yeah.
It's also good to have a tax commissioner or tax assessor who are working with us.
Yes, they are, they are. I had one as principal of the, had this commissioner, right, as principal of the day.
Jessica.
Jessica. Hello, Joe.
Hello. Hey. Before we get into our update on the elementary school, I did want to just go over a couple of highlights of our building committee meeting, which was held September 14. We had, we had two primary items that we discussed at that meeting. One was the purchase of bubble units and pods for next school year. We, we planned a regular recommendation forward at the end of next month for a specific number of either single lives or pod or both. But what we discussed in the building committee meeting was more about procurement of those. And system operations would like to utilize our current purchase contract to purchase additional units for next school year. The provisions in that contract allow us to do that for 12-month period. And that gives us two big bands, as we feel. One is cost. It's like if we put that back on the street right now, it's going to be a higher cost to us than if we utilize our, our current contract. There'll still be an increase there. Utilize our current contract, we don't believe it would be as much. The other piece is time. You know, we've got to advertise this, like proposals and that sort of thing. It just increases timeframe and we really felt we were ahead of the game last year in ordering these units. But we just didn't get that pot and that BASSA in the nick of time, just because of all, all sorts of things kind of popping up and that we had to deal with. So anyway, that's, that's something that we'd like to pursue, so that we can get a jump on that, get at the front of the line for units to accommodate growth next year. The other, any questions on that, I guess, before we get on to the next slide? Okay, the other piece that we discussed was options for our new elementary school. And so I'll, I'll be through that there. Options were discussed regarding how Appalachian Cluster Schools will feed into the new elementary school on the Innovation Campus. System staff has been in a lot of meetings here late, meeting with school governance teams and district leadership to gather the feedback on these various ideas regarding which schools and grade levels will feed into the new building. And so along with the traditional redistricting approach, we also looked at the fourth, fifth grade academy model. And that academy approach, we had the fourth and fifth grade classes from Bethlehem, Kennedy at Yargo, going to the elementary school at the Innovation Campus. Auburn Elementary School would continue to operate as a K5 school, with a four or five academy on their campus. So survey has been issued to receive additional feedback on those options for parents, teachers, staff, and the community in the Appalachian Cluster. And then after fall break, a series of meetings will be held at each of the elementary schools in person. So we can gather additional comment and feedback there. So the goal will be to have a final recommendation on which to, on which approach to take by the October or the work sessions. I've left in the hour. If you don't have any in particular.
I think you summarized it pretty, pretty well, and getting all the information, so you all have it all at that time before we can have a good discussion over it and decide how to move forward. A lot, a lot of information coming in to go through.
So I do have a question about this. And I was at the meeting, and I thought I understood very much, but so what we're saying is that Auburn, because of transportation time on a bus, is going to stay at Auburn for the fifth grade. But they're going to have their own building, right? Is that the plan now? Is that understood?
That's right, and that's, that's where it dovetails with the pot discussion.
Right.
Yeah. If we go forward, we wind up with. Have that.
And this may be more with Dr. Boeckman's question, but so we're going to separate Auburn fourth and fifth grade. All the other fourth and fifth grades are going to be together. How much collaboration with all these teachers are we going to be able to have to ensure that they're all also patient with the same things?
Yeah, if we, if we go with that option, we'd make sure that they would be in lockstep. It would be like being in the same building exactly, but with virtual meetings and teams and everything else that we do, we can stay pretty, pretty close. Same curriculum, same, if we make curriculum changes due to going to fourth and fifth, the same curriculum change.
I want that communication to be the same, because I want all these students to have like.
Good point, yes.
I do have a question. I know back when we had all this burst of growth many years ago, we talked about building, I think you were here then, building our class, our, our elementaries to home. I think 900 middle schools, 1,200, and high schools, was it then 15?
18.
18. What are we doing, because we talked about this then also, to get rid of these learning cottages now? Instead of just continuing to buy more and more and more, what are we doing to look out, you know, instead of just being reactive, be proactive? What are we going to do to try and get rid of these?
Right.
And build our schools bigger?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a decision the board has to make. They want to make the school bigger, but going off the nine, 12, and 18 that situation we have at this time, so we're building a new elementary school. We've got our land service permit for addition of assets today, so we'll begin construction of that. We've got a grading nearly complete for the new school out there at the Innovation Campus as well. But we've, we've got to get funding accumulated at state, you know, along with local dollars to actually build, build the school. But, you know, pods and mobiles are going to be, that's going to be part of it right now.
Yeah.
It unfortunately is, and it's, you know, Joe's, Joe and his team do the best job, I think, around it. You know, we can't build on, on, on projections. Again, we have to wait for the state to, you know, tell us what, what we earn and that type of thing. But the way they've been going and, and, you know, adding and going it, getting the grading done, so we can speed up those buildings. Perfect examples out at the Innovation Campus with the middle school. That'll be pretty much ready to be poured out there when we get the, when we get an okay to go. But other than that, it's, you know, the pods, I think, are better, where we can use them are probably a much better use of our money. As far as those go, they're definitely a lot nicer for the students and teachers. But unfortunately, with the growth that we're seeing right now, it's, the learning cottages, as we lovingly call them, are not going away anytime soon.
But that's why we need the funding formula changed. And I hear that, not just from our district, from a wider district.
For the state, and we're still running on it, so.
Right, so that's something.
Wish we could fix that, but.
Putting a plug in.
Better minds than I will work on that, but.
So the new elementary school is done with, the end of all of our dollars. That's not a position we want to put ourselves in really, you know, very often.
No.
So we have to follow that state funding.
Oh, yeah.
We had the high school level, the state showed the, we showed the at the high school level, so that's where we went to next.
Yeah, the place is, that's a perfect example of ways we've tried to accelerate our building plan where we can. BASSA was a good example. We knew we couldn't afford to build the full 1,800 school, so we kind of split it over splosts. And over time, so we could at least, you know, get half of it built and pull from the high schools for that, and that will be the other. And like Joe was saying, with this elementary, we didn't show a need at the state, but we made the decision, we made the decision that we know we need it on that side of town, of the county, and we can't, you know, we can't bus kids from Bethlehem to county line, it just doesn't, it doesn't work. And we can't redistrict the whole county to make it work, so we had to kind of bite the bullet on that one and do it with all local funds. We did that, really, I mean, if we hadn't done that, we'd have a lot more portables out.
I mean, yeah, it just concerns me after being there, you know, I've been there, I'm not kids, but you know, when you have bad weather and stuff like that, have our teachers and our students out there in that. It's a lot safer to, to have them, and even if we put additional, you know, build on.
Yeah, and the pods are better for that too. Yeah, no, I've caught in them myself, and they're not great. They are, they're, they've come a long way. They're not like the. They're nicer. As one of the students at Yargo said the other day on our visit, State Superintendent, these have windows. The old ones don't. They've come a long way, but they're still, again, they're still portables, and they're still, still temporary, but yeah.
And you don't feel exactly for them.
Yes, they did.
That's what they're.
It is a little superstar.
They were, they, it's.
All right, and the board has also purchased additional land, so we're ready to look at those.
Head of the game there, too.
Hopefully, you know, start some site work on that for too long. The state doesn't reimburse us for that anyway, so we can kind of get out there on some of that in this, in this next process. All right, so our new elementary school, but really the whole campus out there, Innovation Campus, you can see there pictured and it's really taking shape and changing every day out there. It has incredible weather to work with, but they're getting themselves in a position one end of that building there where they can work inside, it's dry already, and should have structural steel, all the grading done. Get rid of this next 30 days, break as well underway, walls complete, so it's, it's really coming along extremely well. We're excited about that, and like I said, we got the land service permit today for BASSA 2. So if you're out on that campus, we'll begin to see some things from now out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Mo.
Please, more presentation prepared. Unfortunately, Ms. Sherry Perry is not here, so it was there for your review, and we will reschedule her presentation for a subsequent change.
Thank you. Is it bad? Is anything now, or?
Not at this time.
All right, we'll have some old business. The policy for possession of weapons by boys is in your packets tonight. You can review that, and I guess we'll hold on that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've had, as you see, a good number of responses. Again, so we've got those for you there to look over. Going into old business, or you need, we guess we'll need to decide if we want to, at that point, whether we wanted to vote on it at that. It, it'll, it could come off the table next week.
Okay. New business, consider, gentlemen, it's Houston.
All right, Superintendent recommends a total of $29 of the general fund fund balance to be loaned to the capital projects funds to cover expenditures for the next, next year is really just the next nine months. The capital projects funds covers technology, buses, renovations, new buildings, and in terms of purchases. And are funded with, with our sales tax dollars and bond proceeds. Due to current and future growth predictions, we have had to move forward on projects for new buildings, renovations, purchase of pods, and we have had some land deals come up that were needed for future growth. At this point, we need to cover some future expenditures with a loan in the general fund just for a year, or like I said, nine months, until we can cover with the bond proceeds. So coming up, we'll have a vote on March 21st, 2023 for our ELOS 7. Then we should be able to get bond proceeds if that vote goes through, we should be able to get bond proceeds by June 2023, and then we'll pay back the general fund before June 30th of 2023. And this will allow the district to continue construction on renovations and new buildings, also buy the IT, the, the technology and the, and the buses that are needed. Next, on the attachment, these are the approved items that we've already approved. As you can see, towers and benefits, an energy lease, the bus GPS, the audit bankies, buses, IT projects, maintenance projects, the ag facilities on Highway 53, ag facilities on Highway 81, mobile units, backup pot, furniture and technology. PDC renovations, these are still open projects. Westside Middle School renovations, furniture and technology. Appalachian High School renovations, furniture and technology, seat fit renovations, furniture and technology. Auburn renovations, furniture and technology, Olson Bank renovations, furniture and technology, Bramble renovations, furniture and technology, Kennedy, Yargo renovations. The BASSA, and that's just the furniture and technology that we're still, have some lingering invoices on. The new elementary school on Austin Road, BASSA 2 site development, the new middle school site, the school site development, our school design, the Mulberry Engineering, Bethlehem renovations, architect and design, county line renovations, architect and design. And then coming up before the end of the year, we'll have a new pod, maybe if you guys agree to that. The BASSA 2 building, we voted on, Bethlehem renovations, county line renovations that we voted on, and then eventually our expand to. So it just looks like that our, we just need a little bit of help to get us through the next nine months, and that's what we're asking for. How much will that leave in our reserves? About 49, so we'll still have 40.
So what does that do to that, that ratio of the, the cushion margin? What does it reduce it to if you take the 20?
Probably about four months.
Okay. Ideally, you like, like to be about six or?
I would be here, but it's supposed to be at two and a half to three months, and so we'll be at four months.
So you're still well above the state's minimum, okay. Consider, gentlemen?
Thank you. Okay, um, the next one is the superintendent recommends giving New Path $25,000 one-time donation to help fund the Feeding Beryl Initiative. The Luther and Suzy Harrison Foundation gave the school system a donation in September of 2021 to support the Feeding Beryl program. This is our food bag distribution to our needy families. At this time, New Path covers 10 of our school, school needs for the food bag distribution. We have asked Harrison Foundation, and they have approved for Beryl Pass School System, to give $25,000 of this donation to New Path to support food bag distribution for Beryl County students.
of this donation to New Path to support food bag distribution for Barra County students. So this is just a donation to us, and so we're taking a portion of it and um giving it to New Path who basically does a lot of our food bags.
The bread bank of schools.
And you have asked the, the foundation if they agreed to that, and they have, they have agreed to it.
Senator?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whip?
How are you? I'm doing well, I would guess, I don't know, I'm here. Um, the superintendent recommends entering into a grant with Athens Gianitorial Services to purchase or post make custodial equipment in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. We received proposal prices, most totaled one hundred and seventy-four thousand, thirty dollars and twenty cents. Uh, however, with market condition, market conditions continuing to be volatile and crazy and whatnot, we recommend a little bit of a contingency there almost twenty-six thousand dollars, just in case somebody decides the price of the equipment is not the price for the long. Our maintenance shot custodial department needs to replace existing equipment on a regular basis, the life cycle uh of existing equipment expires. Our equipment now is over five years old, we're reaching points of continued repairs and breakdowns. Additional equipment is also needed to provide labor efficiency as we've changed our floors from carpet to BCT in most of our classrooms. Uh, we issued an RFP, I personally called three vendors local to us, only one responded. We had two uh other cities, actually other states, that asked us to send them the RFP, but they did not send pricing. So we received pricing from Athens Gianitorial only, however, pricing is in line with what we have seen over the last several years when we've done some other purchases for uh new schools. So the funds we're looking to pay for this out of are the ESS ARPONS and uh Business Services is working with us right now, get free approval on that, hopefully in the next.
And they have the equipment available, they can provide it?
Yes.
Which I assume the other companies couldn't.
Yes, so really the longest lead time that they stayed was eight weeks, which surprised me.
Senator Judd, any questions? Thank you, sir. Dr. Mook?
I was wanting to have to move back to another.
You made it off.
We're gonna see how you operate on the fly.
What would you, yes. So the Hope Methlin, the superintendent recommends optimizing the payment of up to twenty one thousand dollars. The actual quote is twenty thousand seven hundred eighty dollars to Hope Methlin Hardcore for the purpose of web-based professional learning platform into literature for Russell Middle School. The purchase of this program supports the school's L four G A grant goal of providing thorough and appropriate grade levels for all students to improve literacy in the areas of reading comprehension and writing in all content areas. L four G A grant funds will be used for this purchase. So just like I was.
Any questions? Okay, so this is, is this all data based or, I mean, uh, technology based, or is this actually, we have print materials and digital materials?
It is a web-based learning.
Okay. Looks good to me.
Thank you.
Lynn, you're killing her.
I'm sorry.
My, my question is, how can we access this material, just like we would a textbook, to see what's out there?
That information will be online. We actually have our educational resources and a list online, so you can go there to access that information.
Okay, and when is this gonna be available?
Once.
For this, for the, when are we doing this? You doing this now, so we get it in a month or whatever?
Yes, once the board approves, or or we'll make sure it's.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Green?
Okay. I come to you once again with another policy. The last several policies that we brought before you were because the Georgia Legislature passed a law requiring us to have a policy for feeding law. Well, there's good news here. They didn't require us to have a policy. But they did require us to put in place rules of conduct or public participation in board meetings. And that, uh, the proposed rules of participation, I will bring you at the October work session. Legal counsel for the Georgia School Board Association recommended that we uh adjust our policy to state the requirements in the law and then put in a separate procedure, the rules of conduct for participation in uh board meetings, so we'll do that. And if you'll think about the way we do the student code of conduct, that's sort of the way this will be. We'll have a policy related to this, to the code of conduct, and then rules of conduct will actually be in a procedure. So we're coming tonight with the policy. Um, and if you look at the proposed policy, which is pulled up for you, um, primarily, we just added a few statements. The new pieces are there in red, so to the first paragraph, we added um a couple of sentences. Um, public participation may be allowed in the discretion of the board at certain additional meetings under procedures set by board. So right now, um, we're required to allow public participation at the regularly scheduled board meetings, which will be the first Tuesday of each month. Um, what this gives us the ability to do is when we adopt the rules of conduct, we can apply them and allow public participation at other meetings that, that, where that would be appropriate, but the same rules of conduct would apply. Um, the second statement there is all members of the public attending any meeting of the board must follow the rules of conduct set forth in the procedures. So not just the person that's standing at the podium, but anybody in the audience, anyone in the meeting would be expected to follow the proposed rules of conduct. Um, moving on to the second paragraph, uh, again, what is in red is added, um, and then what you see struck through is what we've been leading. So that first sentence would be that basically the superintendent will make the procedures available to members of the public at regular meetings in accordance with this policy, to address, I'm sorry, allow the members of the public to address the board at regular meetings in accordance with this policy. And then these procedures shall include a requirement that notice be given at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. So if anyone wants to speak uh at a regularly scheduled meeting of board, they would provide notice um twenty-four hours in advance. These procedures shall be available at the superintendent's office upon request. And then the last paragraph there would be um changed to be all comments to the board in accordance with this policy are to be brief, civil, and are intended for the board to hear comments or concerns without taking action at that time. Um, so those, that would be the proposal that we would um offer. The, the recommendation is that superintendent recommends placing policy B C B I of participation in board meetings on the table for public reviews at the next scheduled meeting of Board of Education. So we would ask that you put these proposed policy on the table for public review, and I'd be glad to issue you questions.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this time we're gonna move into executive session. Discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disbar, action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rate of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for position superintendent, as well as to review and appeal from a student disciplinary tribunal.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes.